All right, good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Members of the public can attend in person or watch or listen to this meeting live via the following means: they can watch it live on Channel 4, or they could also watch it live at LHCaz.gov/TV. We all now have an invocation from Stephanie LeWares from the Community Presbyterian Church. Welcome, Stephanie.
Let's pray together. Most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we just come together and just ask that you're with the proceedings this evening, that all the decisions made would just be in the best favor of this great community that we live in, and that you would give wisdom to the conversation, our leaders, and just be with all of those that come before this podium, that it would be words of research and respect, and that we can just come together in common knowledge to see this city flourish and be the great community that we know it is. Continue to just help us be safe, protect each other, love one another, and above all, be kind. And we pray all these things in your holy and almighty name this evening. Amen.
Thank you. Now, if you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we will have it led by Debbie Pennington from the River Cities United Way, and I believe she is going to be zooming in. So, in the control room, I believe they'll bring her up.
I am here.
Hi, Debbie.
Hi. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Debbie, if you'd like to share a little bit about your organization with us?
Hi, everyone. I'm Debbie Pennington with River Cities United Way. So, we've been working really hard with the Lake Havasu Resource Alliance. Today, we had our meeting, and we are distributing the $250,000 to the local businesses in town. So, five businesses applied, and we're able to submit their financials for us to look over. Two of them, which we have awarded; three of them, we have not. And then, we still have a few more applications that have come in, but they haven't submitted all of their financials and all of the stuff that we need. So, we're still working on that and moving forward with those as well. So, we have at least 11 people, 11 businesses, I should say, that have interested, and seven of those have actually applied. We've also helped about 220 local businesses, as well as individuals in the community. We have raised over $70,000, and we have about $16,000 left that we have to spend to help the individuals. So, that's currently where we're sitting right now. The Better Business Bureau is still offering their grants, and the Havasu Community Health Foundation. I'm not sure where they're at exactly pound-wise with food, but they have been continually distributing foods left and right to all of our community partners. That's currently where we're at right at the moment.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for joining us this evening, and thank you for sharing the great work that you are doing with the LHC Resource Alliance. We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item four on our agenda. Ms. Williams, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmembers Jenny Koch, here. Gordon Groat, here. Michelle Lynn, here. Donna McCoy, here. Jim Dolan, here. Vice Mayor David Lane, here. Mayor Kal Sheehy, here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Before we move on to item five, which is called to the public, just for those people that are viewing at home, we are doing in-person meetings here in Lake Havasu City. We've modified the council chambers a bit. We have acrylic separating the council members so we can remove the face coverings. We are trying to keep people spaced six feet apart. We moved the podium to the center of the room to allow for that to happen, and we ask folks to wear face covering when they're in the council chambers. With that being said, we'll move on to item five, which is the call to the public. You do not have to sign up for call to the public, but we have had several folks do so. And so, we'll just go in order of the receipts, and then, anyone else that would like to speak can do so as well. So, we'll first start with Karen Vanderjack. And you, real quick, Karen, before you go, you do have three minutes for call to the public. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time; yellow means one minute remaining, and red means your three minutes is up. So, it's right there on the dais there. It's kind of hidden. We couldn't move it all when we moved everything. So, but, all right, Ms. Vanderjack.
Okay. Thank you for the helpful handoff and the information you brought out now, standing. I'd like to report some health issues that have affected worse than it has affected you. From the mask. Brenda Frame said she had a friend who started turning gray when she had to wear the mask. She was told by her doctor that she can't wear a mask because of blood clots in her lungs. Shanny Tomy passed out after wearing a mask for 45 minutes. Vicky Figueroa developed pneumonia from wearing a mask. Jeanne Kentsch reported her sister got pneumonia from wearing it during her eight-hour shift at a convenience store, and she had to take off a month, and her doctor told her she could not go back to work if she had to wear a mask. Nina Dobbs has a serious heart issue that put her on medication directly due to the wearing a mask, as per her doctor. Number two, a mask mandate has created an atmosphere of fear in our community. Many citizens feel it is their duty to bully people who are not wearing a mask. This is creating unrest, hostility, thereby dividing us as a community. Number three, wearing a mask is taking away our ability to govern our own behavior. This is a republic, not a communist country, where citizens, not subjects, have rights to make decisions about their own health. Number four, schoolchildren and their parents need to have the fear issue removed. Teaching children fear is a life-changing lesson. We all take risks. We get into a car. We choose who to marry. We get onto a plane. This is life. We can't and don't need the government to create more fear with unjust mandates. Number five is, in the month of July, I stayed in a suburb of Denver, which is called Parker, Colorado, with a population of 55,000 people. They were given the mask mandate by the governor on July 3rd, and the response of the mayor of Parker, Colorado, was, "We opt out." The reason he gave sounded a lot like Lake Havasu City. Number one, our city is spread out. Number two, we have no homeless. Number three, our population is a little higher income level. And, number four, his reason was, our numbers are down in the city. What we need is a churchhill who is not afraid to speak truth, protect our precious liberties, and be willing to take the consequences to be on the side of what is right. If we say we want and value freedom, we all have to live with the consequences. Benjamin Franklin said, "Those who give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." We respectfully implore you to immediately remove the mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jan Shapiro. They can pass, okay? Next is Greg Befor.
Before we begin, just want to say that I, over the course of my life, I made a habit if I bring a problem to people, I'll also like to bring a solution. And I emailed all the councilmembers this weekend and asked for an additional 30 seconds to be able to talk about that solution tonight, and I haven't heard back from anybody. So, I'm asking if you're going to grant me an additional 30 seconds this evening to talk about a solution to a problem that I'm bringing to the city tonight, so.
Yeah, sure. If you want to get started, and let's make our way through it, and if you need some extra time, we'll consider that.
Sure. I'd just like to say that I could be addressing any city council or county commission in the country right now. What I'm about to say applies to all of them. But I'm addressing you because you're accountable to me, right? This isn't a political statement. I'm neither Republican or Democrat, and some of the things that I am going to say might offend some people. That certainly is not my intention, but feel free to get as offended and indignant as you want. I'm willing to provide evidence to support the things that I'm, the proclamations that are coming out of my mouth tonight, okay? I have a simple and what I consider to be a real effective solution to this Orwellian nightmare that's being thrust upon humanity in general and the people of Lake Havasu specifically, and that is tell the truth. Tell the truth, and if you don't have the courage to tell the truth, then stop lying to yourself and stop propagating and acting on the lies of other people. Let me be clear, I'm not denying the existence of a virus that has killed less people than, by itself, than 10,000, according to the CDC. This is not a pandemic. The emergency is over by every definition, but yet, we still tout that we're in an emergency, and this is a pandemic. The remedy's been worse than the cure by magnitudes, than the disease, I'm sorry, than the disease itself by magnitudes. By magnitudes. You have no idea the suffering that you're causing the people of this community. Have no idea. Why? Because it's not being talked about. The trade-offs aren't being measured. Nobody's talking about and quantifying the impact psychologically, economically, and physically that's having on the people of this community. Nobody's quantifying it. Your COVID task forces, I know that, I've been to the site. Remember the 2.2 million dead that we were told? Remember that figure? Then, the guy that came up with that couldn't even believe his own lies and snuck out and went and had an affair with his girlfriend. Then, when the numbers didn't fit, they started reducing them. Death count didn't come up, they started reducing the numbers. When that didn't fit, they started changing the numbers and the stats to fit. When that didn't work, we started shifting our focus to case numbers. Positive case numbers, being conducted with tests that have been proven not to be reliable and aren't even designed for that purpose, and yet, we're using positive tests as a metric to allow businesses to open. People that are asymptomatic could have positive tests, right? The numbers are flawed, the stats are flawed. We've been lied to about everything, everything. But the truth's been destroyed. It's been destroyed by pseudoscience, lies, and crystal ball predictions, is all I can come up with, with a lot of this stuff. And it's been amplified by a media who's dead-set on gaslighting everybody in this country into believing that the only way we're going to get back to a new normal is with a shot or some kind of a tracking system. That's the only way we're going to get back to normal? Really? That's why, remember 14 days to flatten the curve? That's why we're six months into this. Remember that? 14 days to flatten the curve? This isn't going to end. It just keeps getting extended. At the same time, the real medical professionals and scientists that are desperately trying to tell people are getting censored and ignored. They're getting censored, ignored. Thank God, there are congressional leaders right now, senators, the governor of Florida. You saw what he said about it, right? It was a mistake, and it'll never happen again, right? We need to have the courage to do that, to say the same thing. As a former police officer, I got lied to every day, every day. Two ways I could tell people were lying to me generally was inconsistencies in their statements and contradictions between what they said and what they actually did. By my experience, that makes Anthony Fauci, the architect of these lockdown measures, a serial liar. Serial liar. He's lied from everything, from the severity of this disease to whether asymptomatic people could carry it, whether masks were effective or not, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So, let's talk about some of his inconsistencies, specifically with masks. Remember, nobody in the United States should be wearing masks now. Now, not here. There's no reason whatsoever to be wearing masks. They don't work. They're symbolic. Remember that? No reason to walk around with a mask. Might make people feel a little better, but it doesn't do anything. And often, there are unintended consequences. Remember him saying that? Fast-forward a little bit later, here's Anthony Fauci touting a mask. Everybody needs to be wearing a mask. Everybody needs to be wearing a mask. I wear a mask because it's symbolic. It's an example of what people should be doing. Another lie. Well, you want to see the contradiction between what Anthony Fauci, and I'll get to that here, the contradiction between what he actually believes and what he does. Here's a picture of it, right here, okay? A lot of times, you know, people subconsciously lie. The things that they believe are true come out in their behaviors, and we learned that as police officers too, right, David? Okay. But there was one crystal ball prediction that Anthony Fauci got right, and that was three days before Trump's inauguration speech, he predicted, predicted a surprise pandemic, didn't he? Go look. If you don't believe me, go look. Do it for yourself. Don't believe the media. Don't believe your Facebook friends. Go do the research yourself. You cannot afford to be intellectually lazy right now, not with what's at stake. The mask, I told you about the mask. Then, when he gets called into Congress about his contradictions and his lies on it, do you have any regrets lying to the public about masks? You know what his answer was? "We did it because we were afraid that they were going to go out and buy them, and medical professionals wouldn't have them available." Well, then, so you lied to go out, and basically, you told people that masks were effective, and yet, you lied to them about wearing them? Which is the lie? It's all lies. He's been lying from day one about everything. You cannot believe him. So, my question to you is, what justification do you have taking policy recommendations from a serial liar or corrupt organizations like the WHO and the CDC? Go do the research about the WHO and the CDC and the things that they've been involved in the past. Remember H1N1 in 2009? That scare? Remember the swine flu pandemic of '76, where everybody was going to have to get vaccinated? Look at history, folks. Go back and take a look, okay? We could talk about policy recommendations from a governor who just spent $3 million a year taxpayer money to support his Mask Up Arizona initiative, right? Okay? Then, here we got the public face of Doug Ducey, who's out there touting masks, okay? Okay? And then, we have the contradiction between what Doug Ducey really believes about masks and social distancing and what he does, right? Okay. What justification do you have continuing to adopt policies from these people? I'm curious. Now, let me get to my recommendation. I'd emailed you, David, back in May, asking to meet with you guys to look at another alternative, another perspective, a different perspective from the one you've been fed in your echo chamber. Got no response. Nobody wanted to take me up on it. So, my recommendation to this city council is that you form a citizens advisory committee consisting of professionals in this community. We have access to a university system here who can help us collect and analyze data and input from citizens throughout this community, businesses too, that have been affected by your decisions to continue this practice. The other thing that this committee could do is provide, either prove or disprove whether there's scientific evidence to support any of the measures, whether it's social distancing, you know, the six-foot distance. Why is it not 10? Why is it not 5? Why 6?
We've given you double the time, Greg, so if you could just finish up with the solutions.
I'll finish up. I'm sorry. I don't mean to take any more of your time. I appreciate the time you've given me.
No, it's just it's the way the meeting's conducted.
I get it. I understand. But that committee's other job would be to either bring you evidence to either refute or support these measures: masks, six-foot distance, social distancing, all of this stuff. Your metrics for opening and closing businesses? I cannot, it's absurd. It's absurd to use the metrics that your health department's using now as a decision basis for opening businesses and keeping them open. It's absurd. If you don't want to do it, it's okay. I don't need your permission to do this. I'm asking to work with the city to do this, and so are these other people here, okay? You need to see the other side. You need to calculate what's happening to these people here, and it's quantifiable. I guarantee you it is, but there are also some qualitative things that need to be brought out. You need to face these people, no masks, and actually put a face to the damage that you're causing here, okay? If anything that I said resonates with any of you or anybody else in this audience, you have my email address, you have my phone number, give me a call. Give me a call. I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you. Thank you for your time.
Next is Sarah Jones.
Just wanted to thank you for giving me the time tonight. And also, Cal, I would like to thank you for showing up to our meeting the other night. That meant quite a lot. It was very helpful. I am speaking tonight clearly about the mask proclamation and asking you to lift all of the restrictions that are COVID-related. Even though I know that there are many exemptions that you have written in there, I strongly feel it's time that we let this go and try to get back to our life. We need to get these lifted. By lifting these restrictions, our scared citizens, our business owners that feel that they have to have these mask mandates or whatnot restrictions in their stores, by lifting this, they're going to feel more comfortable to come back out to, like everything's okay, starting to become okay again. We can't keep living in this fear, in this dark. We can't. And we know it's okay. It's all right to come back out. We specifically elected, we voted for each of you, okay? We voted for you to help protect us and to lead us, and also, there's no one who could have predicted this COVID and what was coming, right? Or could we have? The writing has been on the wall for several years. We have been warned by several people, Fauci being one of them, that a pandemic was coming. We didn't listen. We didn't believe something like that was capable of happening. We've never seen that happen before, so we did not heed the warning. Now, we know that COVID was not an accident, okay? Bill and Melinda Gates, the foundation 201, I hope that all of you have at least explored some of that, looked into it. That is the fear of our citizens nationwide, worldwide, okay? The vaccine. They told us that they plan on doing that, and so far, their plan is well into motion. We do have vaccines coming. We are scared to death of that, okay? And it all starts with a mask. It all starts with a mask. Also, wondering if that's why the military, we have military that are being dropped off by the bus loads in other cities nearby. What are they doing here? Is this part of it? We, as citizens, we see the writing on the wall. We see it, okay? And we're scared to death. We know that it all starts with a mask, and here we go. It keeps going on with the vaccine, all these other things. The writing isn't only on the wall this time, though. They are blatantly telling us this is what they want to do, the vaccine, the chip, okay? And they're not trying to hide it anymore. They're telling us this is what they're pushing for. And this time, we need to believe them, okay? We need to fight back against that, all of it, and say no. And it starts with a mask. It isn't just a mask. It isn't protecting anyone, and it isn't keeping anyone healthier. It's actually making us sicker, okay? It's making our immune system weaker. We elected you guys to protect us from the enemy, and with a death toll of less than around 9,200 people nationwide, according to the CDC dying from COVID, it's clear to us now that it's not COVID that we need protection from. We are pleading with each of you to please help us from what is clearly coming. This pandemic has affected us in worse ways than any virus ever, ever could have. We plead with each of you to stop listening to the excuses of meeting the fake benchmarks and the fake numbers and listen to your community, listen to your citizens, okay? Please lift every one of these restrictions and opt our city out of this. You were able to opt us in. You had the choice to get us in. You have the choice to get us out. We are begging you, please get us out, because more is coming. It starts with the mask, okay? And we would like for you to err on the side of freedom, and that is our God-given right. So, I wanted to thank you guys for listening, but we're going to keep fighting, and we would like for you to join us and fight with us. We would like to help you guys in any way to help stop this, because we all know this is getting ridiculous. So, if there's a way we can help you aside masking up and doing your restrictions, okay? If there's a way we can help get this to stop, let us know, because we're doing research. We're contacting attorneys. We're doing quite a bit. We're talking to people. So, if there is a way that we can help you guys help us fight this and stop this, let us know, and we would appreciate that you do that for us as well. All right? Thank you for the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Next is Janet Grippi.
Mayor Sheehy and council, we are not in a health crisis. There is no justification for business and school and recreation shutdowns here or mandatory wearing of face coverings in public. Immediately stop controlling free citizens with irrational, unreasonable, universal mandates. Officials have overstepped their authority. The governor's order says that a city may adopt and enforce policies requiring wearing a mask. I can't fault you for reacting the way you did early on, because none of us knew exactly what we were dealing with. Was this bioterrorism, or was it a bad flu epidemic? But as things became clear that the imperial model, that the imperial model death projections were way off mark, and you saw businesses shutting down and people becoming sick with fear, you could have and should have lifted your mask proclamation. Prescott, a town of similar size and demographics, has a mayor that chose not to mandate face coverings because he trusted that his businesses and citizens have the common sense to act responsibly, and apparently, they have, judged by the numbers. They had their big art festival and July 4th rodeo, as well as Bluegrass Festival with no disasters. I invite you to go on the City of Prescott Facebook page and listen to the mayor's weekly updates. Better yet, pick up the phone and call the mayor of Prescott and do what he did in his town. Hopefully, our mayor and council are as competent as the town of Prescott. Another example is the town of Parker, right down the river, with the exception of Tribal Land, where they never issued a mask mandate. Same with the town of Eager, Arizona. Those are examples of mayors who chose to say no to the mask mandates, as you, Mayor Sheehy, and council could also say no. Take the mask off, open the city, let owners of businesses do what they need to do to feed their families, take the masks off, quit muzzling and masking the children. The psychological damage you're doing to them is horrible. As an interesting side note, an attorney friend of mine in Italy emailed me today that last week, in preparation for the school's reopening, approximately 15,000 Italian teachers took the COVID serological test, and the positive return rate was just 1%, or 150 people out of 15,000. So, apparently, with the exception of the hardest-hit cities of Italy, COVID was not near as widespread as previously thought. This suggests that the whole world may have overreacted, thus nearly destroying their economies in the process, and they are now suffering the horrific unintended consequences of those decisions. As you may or may not know, health officials in Denmark, Sweden, and Netherlands see no point in requiring individuals to wear masks, not even on public transport, stating there is no benefit, that there will be negative impact. These countries have all, all have socialized medical systems and definitely don't want their hospitals overrun with sick people. The opening of the Constitution of the United States of America is "we, the people." Well, we, the people, are here. We, the people, are awake, and we, the people, will be watching your every move. We, the people, will not sit back and allow you to take our freedom and liberties away. We, the people, will never stop fighting for humanity, freedom, and liberty, and will not allow anything less. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alita Anderson.
That's already short. Thank you, mayor and city council. We're not sick, but we're being treated like we're sick. When the CDC originally started, they were, you know, that's not only the people that were sick or that were caretakers wore the masks, and then, suddenly, it just keeps blossoming off, even though the states that didn't lock down had 75% lower COVID fatality, fewer of the private jobs were lost. Now, the CDC comes out and says that only 6% was actual COVID deaths, saying 9,200 in the USA, but in, if you look at Arizona, they're saying... But in, if you look at the Arizona, they're saying we had 5,200 of those. So our numbers are wrong. And yet, your benchmarks are based on numbers that everybody keeps adjusting and correcting. So the people have lost any kind of faith in the numbers that are put forth. As we watch our small businesses die, we lose more people. I guess Lake Havasu has lost 51, Mojave County about 203 of the COVID deaths related to that, according to the website, Arizona DHS.gov. But yet, in 2018, we've lost 16,000 people to heart disease, 2,000 to diabetes. I mean, this is clearly not a pandemic, and we're treating it. And like everybody keeps saying before me, so I'm not going to repeat, it's taking its toll on our city. People are closing outdoor events. That's part of what makes us. Our car events, our main street, all of our outdoor events, the Halloween. It's just basically like, we don't matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karina Rangel. Okay. And Brian Leffler. You can give it to the clerk, and then she'll get it over. Thank you, Brian.
Hi, my name is Brian Leffler, and I'm a very concerned resident of Lake Havasu City. Why am I so concerned? I'm watching a tyrannical government that is federal, state, county, city, destroy our constitutional republic promoting a false flag event. The paper that she's passing around is from congress.gov. That is the CARES Act, which I'm sure every one of you have heard of, which, if you look when it was introduced on the House floor, it was introduced on January 24, 2019, a full 11 months before anybody heard of the Wuhan virus escaping in China. This is contrived. Under the guise of a pandemic, let's see, okay, I'm sorry, I lost my place. The Rockefeller Foundation came out with Operation Lockstep in 2010. So we've had this in planning for 10 years. They had a couple of nice quotes. One quote is, "Under the guise of a pandemic, we will create a prison state." They also had another quote that said, "A world of tighter top-down government control and more authoritarian leadership with limited innovation and citizen control." And more authoritarian leadership with limited citizen pushback. Sorry. I'm not good at reading a lot. I'm better at just speaking. But the thing is, is that we have, we go down to the CDC numbers. The CDC admits and has put it out publicly that the test kits are 80.33% false positives. So you have to initially take all of your numbers by CDC numbers and cut that by 80.33%. So all of your benchmark numbers, you need to cut by that percentage to get a more accurate look at what's going on. And that's for the CDC. CDC admitted last week that 94% of all the COVID deaths are basically have comorbidities, okay? They didn't die from COVID. They didn't get COVID and fall over dead. I don't know of anybody that actually has. But anyway, we'll move on from that. The PCR test, which is being given to people, the person that invented the PCR test, his name is Carey Mullins, and that's the one where they stick the swab back in your brain and all that. The inventor of that test has said that the PCR test cannot be used for diagnostic purposes. He admits that. All this information is out there. Anyone can find out at any time. He's done interviews right and left. You cannot use the test to find COVID. It doesn't work. So the whole benchmark numbers that you're looking at saying, well, we need to keep this in place because these benchmarks is no good. I also realize that the mandate that was put out has no teeth to it, okay? Even though you say it has no teeth to it, there are people that take it because it is a mandate, says mandate. These people take it as the rule of law. And there are people running around in stores harassing people, giving people dirty looks. When I go to a store, I won't wear a mask because I'm not putting my health at risk, okay? The masks have just a laundry list of health problems associated with them. People are being admitted to hospitals all over the country because of fungus in their lungs, because they're breathing this dirty air. So was that my time?
Yes. Yeah, you can go ahead and wrap up.
All right. So what I want to say is that you have a real opportunity here to select freedom and the Constitution, make Lake Havasu free, and be a benchmark for the rest of the county and the state. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then Karina.
Hi, how are you all doing tonight? It's good. So I'm not going to talk numbers to you because you've already heard a mouthful of numbers, and we've already talked about numbers on Sunday. And regardless of any mandate established, there is no grounds to continue it if there is inaccurate numbers to begin with because you have no benchmark, you have nothing because there's no accuracy. So to start, I'd like to talk about business liability that was mentioned. What about when employees use the restroom? So there's a risk of catching some illness, correct? If they don't keep up on cleaning, if the company doesn't keep up on cleaning, you know, it could create long-term illness for that employee. How does the employer take accountability for that? How are they held accountable for that? They don't. Some places don't even offer seat covers. So what's my point? Businesses wouldn't be held accountable if I caught an illness. How could they be? The employees take on the risk regardless, by choice. Keyword, "choice." Businesses wouldn't be held accountable. Here's another point. I have food allergies, and there's about not 100% chance that I wouldn't catch some reaction by eating at an establishment. They can't guarantee me that 100% chance, just like you can't guarantee me that 100% chance that you're going to prevent COVID from wearing a mask, okay? So if there's maybe like a 98% chance that, you know, I will survive and not catch a reaction from eating at this establishment, I still will do it because of the possible outcome, that I'll still make that choice. It should always be our choice. There's entirely too many variables to take control without taking complete control. There's a 98% plus chance of survival of COVID. As a United States Marine Corps veteran, a mother, hospitality worker, and a concerned constituent, please rethink this approach by applying facts and logic. Hospitality is hurting. Our town is more locally owned than anything else. Small businesses are struggling. You're sending out a message of fear and power. If you truly care to see our town thrive and pull through this alleged pandemic, remove this unconstitutional proclamation, regardless of it being just a sensible, hey, please mask up from our mayor, okay? It's dangerous, and when you play dangerous games, people get hurt. You say that you're not a medical professional, and neither am I. Well, those alleged professionals, those alleged experts that are giving us these numbers, they started by reading. If you don't know this, Albert Einstein was self-taught, okay? The facts are there, but you refuse to read and follow through with common sense. Einstein wouldn't even need to tell you that. Take a good look around. We are counting on you to do the right thing by the Constitution and by your fellow Americans. Please, remove the mandate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the citizens that have signed up for call to the public. Would anyone else like to address the council within the jurisdiction of the city?
Didn't plan on this tonight, but thank you. Welcome, everyone, and I thank these people out here. I will admit, today was the very first time that I filled my asthma medicine. When my husband pulled it out of the cupboard the other day because I was having an asthma attack, he said, Nancy, this expired in 2016. As I'm talking to you today, I have a rash all around my face that I'm broken out with. I've been following your mandate. I called my doctor twice today. He said, quit wearing the mask. So thank you. I appreciate all you. And I understand, as being a board of trustee of the hospital, our hospital is okay, and we're okay. And that was the reason why we started all this, is the PPP, it was the respira, all of these guidelines, and it's destroying our industry. You know, I spoke with a couple of you guys already about the lumber shortages. It's construction next. So thank you again. I didn't plan on coming up here. I didn't know if I was going to share this personal with you. It's not COVID. This is literally asthma attacks and fungus, whatever, on my face that I don't appreciate. So thank you much.
Would anyone else like to address council? Just make way to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Candace Marquez, and one thing that hasn't been brought up is that I'm an adult. I would like to make an adult choice of wearing a mask or not. And if somebody is afraid of getting the virus, then they have that choice too. Me not wearing a mask is not going to give them the virus and that. And by the way, these masks don't protect anything. The particulates from the virus are small enough to get through these masks. It's a placebo, and we need to stop this. Please give us our adulthood back. Give us the choice of whether or not we want to wear a mask, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like, yeah, please just make way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, y'all. Yes, my name is Pat Nix. I am due to have surgery on the 15th. I can't have that surgery unless I take the COVID test. I absolutely refused. My doctor called me and said, his hands are tied. If I don't take the test, I can't have this cancer surgery. This is terrible. This is not what this country is about. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council?
My name is Chris Young.
Yeah, Chris, could you just put the, thank you? Yeah, you could, yeah, excellent.
I didn't intend on speaking, but I appreciate you hearing me. As with everyone else that has mentioned different numbers, the CDC saying less than 10,000 people have died of COVID as opposed to with COVID is one factor I think should absolutely be considered. Along with tests or studies that have come out just recently, that the accuracy of the test, because of its magnification at 40 and 50 times, is a person could have had COVID six months ago and then still test positive because of the level of magnification. Apparently, industry standard is 27 to 30, never 35, never 40 or 50, which is what they're using in testing for COVID. And it's been mentioned that the numbers don't match up. So it's hard for myself and many others to trust the logic of the restrictions in general, but I'm here about the mask specifically. We got through April, May, June, when there was an epidemic supposedly, and we did it without masks. And I was so proud of Havasu that we lived and we survived, and essential workers were working, people were gathering, and we weren't mandated to wear a mask. And July 1, I think, you announced that you would not require a mask. And then that afternoon, it changed. And so I believe it's been since July 4 that we've had the proclamation. As it's also been said, business owners feel compelled then to put a sign up that says a mask is mandated. I personally don't know the difference between a proclamation and a mandate and the power of it. And I know you've put out a recent statement saying all of the exemptions, but those aren't listed, and business owners, I don't think, are aware of them. And so when I go into a store, I don't, I don't wear a mask. I don't patronize businesses that require it. I feel bad for employees. I go to Del Taco on occasion. I feel horrible for those people who are having to wear masks to keep their job. At my, on a personal level, none of it, most people at my work were not wearing masks until your proclamation. And because of the proclamation, naturally, our, the owner, probably for liability purposes, felt it necessary to mandate that we all wear them. It's changed everything. And I don't speak for everyone at my job, but many of us feel that one day is equal to three because we are, I'm getting less oxygen, I have throat infections, dizziness, I have to get up from my desk many more times than I typically would, and that's the physical aspect to it. Putting a face covering, being mandated to cover my face is just personally, I feel accosted, I feel pressed on, and I don't think that I'm alone in that. And we are looking to you to relieve us of an unnecessary proclamation mandate, however it is that you refer to it. We're looking to you. And without that, we're all either following along or we're in rebellion. And things are becoming hostile. I have a daughter who is, works at, she's required to tell people that they need a mask. And people are volatile. And thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council at call to the public? Yeah, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Yeah, John, you all up?
Yeah, John, you can just lift the microphone up a little bit so that, perfect.
I'm a 40-year resident of Lake Havasu. I'm here to tell you that I run a page called Zero Tolerance Lake Havasu. We have over 2,600 people now. We're trying to work with you people. Either way, the consensus is, we're not wearing a mask anymore. So we're asking you first to think this through. Instead of keeping this thing all the way out to October 15, and then having us run into snowbird season, which we know is flu season, and then we run into some more garbage, extend, 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 we're not going for it. So there's going to be an issue, you know? We want to work with everybody. But, you know, I just want to say, this is where we're at, you know? We're just not gonna be controlled with these masks. The jig is up, okay? You know, like everybody said, went from 2 million to 150,000 to 9,000. This whole thing should have never happened, and I'm not blaming any of you folks. I'm saying the whole country. The whole thing should have never happened. So right now is the time to fix it. You people can look real good by, you know, making a conscious thought about this and going, yeah, maybe, you know, maybe this isn't the thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Bill Mitchell, and I've been a resident of Lake Havasu for about 17 years. And I wasn't going to talk tonight, but I didn't hear anybody mention the probably most salient fact that is before you as a body, governmental body of Lake Havasu, which is the constitutionality of the whole thing, the mandates, the whole nine yards. Because the reality is that if you create a mandate, a law, or anything that is not constitutional, it's null and void. It does not have, it's unenforceable, and the citizenry does not have to obey it. And I'd be happy to cite you the cases and the things that back that up. But you, as a body, are required to enforce the Constitution and to do the things that is right in the city. So I'm going to suggest to you that you make this a sanctuary city, a constitutional sanctuary city where we support the Constitution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council call to the public? Yeah, Jan? Yes. Yeah, Dan, if you could just state your name for the record.
My name's Jan Shapiro.
My name's Jan Shapiro, and just thank you so much for listening to us. I just felt like you needed to have a mother's heart and a grandmother's heart and a personal testimony about this. I have a grandson, he's 20 years old, who's worked in Havasu. He's trying to make his way, he has car payment, he's trying to be an adult, lost his job because of all of this COVID stuff, and finally gets a job at one of the restaurants in town. And we had a conversation yesterday for the first time about that. And I just want to tell you that my 20-year-old grandson has to tell people to leave the restaurant because they don't have a mask on. And it's devastating to him. But in order to keep his job, he has to do that. That's what these mandates have done. It's caused division, it's caused fear. I can't walk into a store and not get looks if I don't wear a mask. If I do wear a mask, I get looks from people who aren't wearing a mask. It's caused more division than I can tell you. And our constitutional rights have been stripped. And my, my grandson doesn't need to go through this. I'm asking you as a grandmother and as a mother, get rid of the mandates, lift them, and tell people in this town that we're going to be above that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during call to the public? If so, yeah, just make your way up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi. I don't like doing this, but my name is Carol Daniels. And I know you've heard about a lot of stuff, and I'm sure you're aware of the statistics and things. But I don't think that, I'm entitled to be inconvenienced during or extraordinary times or when matters of public health are at stake. But we are entitled to know the truth. And the truth is masks, mask mandates are a giant fraud, and here's why. Hawaii has mostly isolated itself from the mainland for months now and has some form of mask mandate since April 20. And yet, despite 2,000 miles of social distancing and being a series of islands, Hawaii is now seeing a 700%, increase in coronavirus. For months, American media and pseudo-experts have been touting Hong Kong's success using masks to push back on the virus. For example, Time Magazine, Why Wearing a Face Mask Is Encouraged in Asia But Shunned in the U.S. CNN, Asia may have been right about coronavirus and face masks, and the rest of the world is coming around. WSJ, To Curb the Coronavirus, Hong Kong Tells the World Masks Work. Vanity Fair, If 80% of Americans Wore Masks, COVID-19 Infections Would Plummet, New Study Says. The study was based on Hong Kong. Los Angeles Times, May 16th, Column, Wondering If L.A.'s New Mask Rules Are Overkill? Look at the Hong Kong example. Do it for the greater good like they do it in Hong Kong. Vox, May 18th, How Masks Help Hong Kong Control the Coronavirus. New Research Shows the Universal Mask Wearing May Help Slow the Spread of COVID-19. IHME modelers themselves never mentioned masks in their original models in March, April, and May, but then all of a sudden showed up in this Journal of Global Health on the 20th of June to tell us all that masks are the easy way to save lives and spare jobs. Even though we didn't tell you that for three months during our modeling, but it is now, and Hong Kong is your primary example of how that works. NPR, July 3rd, Widespread Use of Face Masks Could Save Tens of Thousands of Lives. Models Project Using the Numbers Again From Hong Kong. The Washington Post, July 20th, Unlike the United States, More and More Countries Are Making Masks Mandatory. How Did Hong Kong's Devotion to the Mask Do Up Against the Virus? Health and Science, July 29th, Hong Kong Is on the Verge of an Outbreak That Could Lead to Hospital Systems Collapse, Chief Executive of Hong Kong's Medical Association Says. So the masks work in Hong Kong until they don't. Hawaii Did a Preemptive Mask Mandate for Months, and That Didn't Work. They Are Seeing 700% Increase. Hong Kong Was Supposedly Setting the Mask Example for the World for Months, and That Didn't Work. It's on its third wave of lockdowns, and its hospital system is about to implode. The Philippines are 91% compliant with masks, and they're going into their third lockdown. Masks Don't Work. The Stats Are There. We've Got to Stop This. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during call to the public? Senator Brelly?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here on two things. I'm a citizen of the city and I'm also your state senator. You sent me to Phoenix to fight for you because we always have to, what we call the great state of Miracopa, which I always call the occupied territory of the state of Miracopa. And unfortunately, Mojave County in our city has been, you know, in the crossfire of the political fights that go on in Phoenix. The mayors of Phoenix, Tucson, Flagstaff, they're all run Democrat mayor cities, and they're all pushing back on the governor and pushing him into a corner and so on and so forth. But a lot of these issues, like the bar restaurant issues, we know and you know that this is put on by the state, i.e. the Department of Liquor, because they have the big hammer to hang over these businesses. But the other retail businesses that are out there, they don't have a state mandate, license, if you will, to hold over their head. Your proclamation was, was very permissive. I, you know, I will acknowledge that. But here's the other thing, the facts, the legislative update, if you will. We don't have the votes to come into our, to call ourselves into a special session. And even if we did have the votes to call ourselves into a special session, we do not have the votes necessary to override the governor. We need 1631 to pass a bill to end these, the executive orders. However, there's that one vote, and that one vote is the governor. He can veto that bill. So, which means we need to have a supermajority to override, veto-proof legislature to override the governor. We don't have that. I'm not going to get into the political aspects of it, but we have, the minority caucus is refusing to cooperate and do any of this because they've kicking this, this political football down, down the field too many times, to include the education community. So, with the respects that was brought up about the town of Eager. The town of Eager is in Apache County. Apache County has had no, Eager had no mask mandate, and they've been open for weeks. The city of Prescott, Yavapai County has been open for weeks by the state's matrix of the county matrix. And my argument has been Mojave County is not like the other counties. For example, Miracopa County, all the cities, their sister cities, neighbor cities are all on top of each other. We're different. We're 65 miles away from Phoenix, or excuse me, Flagstaff, or the other place, Kingman. We're 65 miles away from Kingman, 65 miles away from Bullhead, and they're 40 miles away from each other. And unfortunately, our numbers are being, Havasu is being punished for, for other parts of the county. So, what I'm asking, I know it's not an agenda, you can't respond, but what I'm asking, Representative Biassucci is asking, Representative Cobb is asking, that you stand with us and help us push back on the governor with the Department of Health. And I, and I mean this, and I mean this with all respect, because I respect every one of you on the, on the dais. You've all been elected by the people. We know that your heart is in the right place. We have all spoken individually, and we know how we all individually we feel about certain things. But you know, this has to end. But we need your help to fight what's going on in Phoenix that's being pushed back on us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, Bonnie, just state your name for the record.
Thanks, I think you just did.
Well, only your first, we need both your first and your last, yeah.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Bonnie Toy. That's all you needed, right?
That's all we need. And we need you to move just a little closer to the microphone for the folks at home. Yes.
Excellent. Hi, I just came to remind you, Mr. Lane, that the last city council meeting, you made a statement, and you said, "It is the job of the city council to fight for the rights of its citizens." So, I just wanted to remind you, please fight for the rights of your citizens. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council at the call to the public? Yeah, one and done, but Sarah, we'll give you, come on up and let's, we'll wrap it up, and then we'll close the call to the public.
I just wanted to say, this is the summation of anybody else wanting to talk, but please end this tonight. Okay, I would love to wake up, we all would love to wake up in the morning to reading that it's over. Okay, please. All right? We can do this. And we have faith in you guys, okay? We have a lot of faith in you. But listen to your people. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, anyone else for a call to the public before we close it? All right, the call to the public is closed. Thank you for your comments this evening. I will now move on to item six, which is the consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove anything from the consent agenda for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. We need a little bit of help on two of our computers. All right, I believe it's just Councilmember Lynn and myself that the computer's not working. So, I think you have the votes for those. I'll do a verbal vote of yes for the consent agenda approval. And then Councilmember Lynn?
Yes.
All right.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven, which is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Starting with item 7.1 is the fiscal year 2019, 20, fourth quarter contracted agency reports. Chief Doyle presented these for our review. Do any council members have any questions on the contract reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item 7.2, which is announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City boards, committees, and commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and city council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City boards, committees, and commissions. The following is the listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one alternate pilot member, Board of Adjustment, four regular members, and three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov.
Thank you. Moving on to item 7.3, which is the city manager's report. Mr. Knutson?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start this evening's report with the recognition of Brent Morris. Brent Morris is in our Public Works Water Division, and he's been there for 30 years as of September 17th. Brent was hired as a maintenance lead in Water Division on, in 1990 on the 17th. In June of 2007, he was reclassified to a utility lead, and then promoted to fields supervisor that same year in November. In 2016, he was promoted to utility supervisor trainee, and a year later, to utility supervisor. Brent is quoted as saying, "When I accepted the offer of employment with Lake Havasu City, home computers and cell phones were in their infancy, and I, like most of you, took for granted that with the turn of, with the turn of a handle, healthy, refreshing water would flow, flow without fail. While I still struggle with computers and smartphones, what I do know very well, given my 30 years in LHC's Water Division, is that it takes a dedicated team of proud professionals to keep our water flowing day and night. This team is very effective at doing so, and I'm proud to be a member, a member of the team." Brent, thank you for your dedication to Lake Havasu City. On Friday, September 4th, Mayor Shi, Vice Mayor Dave Lane, and councilmembers Donna McCoy and Gordon Groat joined Congressman Paul Gosar for the official dedication of the renaming of the Lake Havasu City Post Office to, now known as the Lake Havasu City Combat Veterans' Memorial Post Office, in honor of all the combat veterans, including six combat veterans from Lake Havasu City who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom, including Carl Hammer, Dylan Reed, Anthony Sasto, Carrie Harmon, and Patrick Tenille, whose mother, Debbie Tenille, featured in the photo on the left, is also our local postmaster. Our Parks and Recreation reopened some activities and programs to the public following CDC guidelines. The Aquatic Center offers lap swim from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at a cost of $5 per visit. Each lane is limited to two swimmers. Working parents and guardians are provided with a safe and convenient after-school option for their children. Starting today, each of the elementary school sites were opened for participation in kindergarten through sixth grade from 2:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Wednesdays. Participants are placed in squads according to the grade they are currently enrolled in. Limited space is available, registration is still open, and you can go to lhcaz.gov to do just that. Recreation is also seeking volunteers for the upcoming youth flight football and junior cheer programs. Volunteers must be at least 14 years of age and love sports and coaching. Register to volunteer online at lhcaz.gov/volunteer. For more information on any of these programs and activities, please contact our Parks and Recreation Department at 928-453-8686. There's been a new sign installed at the Sarah Park Trailhead. This endeavor initiated under the leadership of Chief Palofas, our fire chief. Involved the joint effort to make this come together quickly for the community. Thank you to Fire Marshal Scott Harmon, Gina Gutierrez for coordinating, and Tim Maple, Tyler Zink, Kevin Schuck, Tony Rabello, and LHPFA charities for covering the cost of the sign, Ken Prosky and his crew at Public Works and Parks and Recreation, BLM and the residents Ted Lamacki, and Vince Konek for digging the holes, and Darren Spence, Tyler Fonte, and Jacob Fanchiato for fabricating and installing the frame. Sorry, Jacob, for butchering your name. The idea of the sign came about after a number of rescues at Sarah Park made it clear that an announcement of some kind was needed at the trailhead. The goal was to educate the public, especially those not familiar with our climate, on the potential hazards of the heat. We believe this sign will definitely help relay that, relay that message and maybe save a life. Might not be for everybody, but for those who are interested, Lake Havasu City and Mojave County are hosting a free outdoor drive-through COVID-19 testing event in Lake Havasu City. It'll be on Sunday and Monday, September 13th and 14th, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in the parking lot at the, at the Aquatic Center located at 100 Park Avenue. Pre-registration is available at the web, at the, at the website you see listed on the screen, but is not required in order to participate in the, in the testing event. Testing is available to 500 tests per day and open to anyone regardless of whether they are experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 or not. You are notified of your personal COVID-19 test within three or two, four days after the event. For more information, please contact Mojave County Public Health at 718-4909. And then lastly, as of last week, Thursday, and according to the Arizona Department of Health Services, our positivity rate for the county as of the week of August 16th is now at 10%, slightly up from 9.3% the preceding week, but, but as of now, that's two weeks in a row. So, we are, according to the state of Arizona, the governor's office, and the Arizona Department of Health Services, we are now categorized in the moderate transmission phase, which is, which allowed, as of last Thursday, indoor gyms and fitness centers to be reopened at 25% capacity, and restaurants and bars providing dining service, indoor theaters and water parks to be reopened, reopened at 50% capacity, all while filing ADH mitigation requirements. For more information on these, the statistics, please visit azdhs.gov. Mayor and council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item eight, public hearings. We'll start with 8.1, a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Romano's 1519 Queens Bay. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and city council, Travis Wall has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Romano's located at 1519 Queens Bay. All posting requirements have
All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License. Staff recommends approval of this license. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have as well.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Williams? Any questions of the applicant? No? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Yeah, please. Yeah, absolutely. Come on up and just state your name for the record.
Gary Romano. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of just meet everybody and whatnot. When I showed up, I saw the people. I thought they were here to support my application, but I guess not. But just super excited to be a part of this community. I've had a house here for 25 years and restaurants for 21 years in California, and just really excited to be here. This was always the plan to, to retire here and be out here, and I just moved it up because, you know, California is getting a little bit difficult, so. But just really excited. If you do have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer anything.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, thank you. Any, any questions of members of the council? No, welcome to Lake Havasu.
All right, thank you.
Yes. All right, would anyone else like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor and Licenses control approve a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Romano's 1519 Queens Bay.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, moving on to item 8.2 is adopt ordinance number 20-1242 for a planned development rezon of 2430 Trade Wind Drive, tract 2293, block five, lot 11, from R3 Limited Multi-Family Residential District to R3 PD Limited Multi-Family Residential Plan Development District for a height exception from the maximum building height of 15 feet to allow a single-family residence with a height of up to 20 feet. I don't have my computer on. Is that Mr. Morris? Are you going to take that? Okay.
Yes. I get my screen shared with you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. As you, as you relayed, this property is a 2430 Trade Wind Drive. It's just up, actually just up McCulloch Boulevard, the corner of McCulloch and Trade Wind, just up from City Hall. Can zoom in a little more on the map here. So it's at the corner of McCulloch and Trade Wind. It's surrounded on the, I guess, on the south, there's vacant lots. To the east, there's a developed multiple family, two, two-unit, multiple family project. Across Trade Wind is the more multiple family. And then across McCulloch Boulevard to the north is undeveloped. There are some single-family homes actually under construction a little farther away from McCulloch Boulevard there. The subject property is zone R3, the same, so here it is outlined in red. The properties in this block are also all zone R3, as well as those across Trade Wind Drive is on R3 multiple family. Goes across McCulloch Boulevard is on RM, is the higher density, 30-foot tall, allowed building height, a multiple family. And then it goes R1 to the north of that. And the city police department complex is here off in that drive in McCulloch. A little more information about the property. This is a topo map. These lines here are showing our one-foot contours on Trade Wind Drive. At the top here, it drops from Trade Wind Drive about six feet down. You go down McCulloch Boulevard, we'll call it to the south. So down McCulloch Boulevard, the lots drop about six foot in elevation. This is something we call a 101 lot, and it helps us decide or determine where, how building heights are, are calculated. And we'll come back and review that in more detail. Now, this request is for planned development for a single-family home on this property. It's, here's the site plan that goes with it. McCulloch Boulevard is at the top, Trade Wind here on the right. It's a single-family home, RV garage, a three, a two-car garage. The property measures about 160 feet across McCulloch, about 125 feet down Trade Wind. The building setbacks are 10 feet from McCulloch, 20 feet from Trade Wind, five feet from this internal side, and 20 feet at the rear. It's labeled at 25 here, but it's actually a 20-foot rear setback for the home. Because this is a planned development, excuse me, slideshow's acting up on here. It comes, the applicant had to provide a development plan for it to show why, how they proposed to develop the property. We typically see this kind of planned development for more commercial use, but in this case, it's for a single-family home on this property, and it's showing this outlined in blue is the home. They're also proposing a, a view deck in the back with a hot tub underneath, an outdoor kitchen, a block wall around most of the property, some trees, landscaping, typical landscaping, rock, and, and folders. The building elevations are shown as a tile roof with stucco exterior and some stone detail work, and overall height from the slab of the home up to the top is 18 and a half feet. And we'll get into more detail on that because that's the crux of why they're asking for this planned development. And again, the development plan must, if approved by council, development plan must essentially meet this plan when the property is actually developed. If there are any major changes to this plan, it would need to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council as a planned development amendment for any major changes. And major changes would be determined by the zoning administrator, depending upon what nature of the proposed changes may be. Getting back to revisiting building height. This particular property, again, here's the topo map again, on Trade Wind Drive, we call that 100. At the level of the street on Trade Wind Drive, we assume that to be an elevation of 100. And so, one foot above that, we call the 101, and that's where we start, start the zero for measuring the height of a building in this case, because this lot slopes down from Trade Wind Drive, call it a downward sloping lot. And the 101, or the zero, is one foot above the high point of the street here. So theoretically, if someone were to come in here, develop this lot, they could level the whole lot, they could bring in dirt, about seven feet fill at the back, tapering up to one foot fill at the front, to bring the whole lot up to even with one foot above the Trade Wind elevation, Trade Wind Drive elevation. Again, we call that a 101 lot. They can bring in fill to bring that whole level, the whole level of the lot up to one foot above the Trade Wind Drive. Here's why we're getting to this request by the applicant to rezon this to a planned development. Now, maybe familiar, planned development may be a mechanism whereby someone can apply for an exception with the underlying development code. In this case, the R3 zoning district allows a maximum building height of 15 feet. This request from the applicant is to go up to 20 feet. The home he's proposing is 18 and a feet, 18 and a half feet tall from the zero. So in this cross-section of, of the situation, over here on the right-hand bottom side is the Trade Wind Street elevation, and we're presuming they're going to fill that lot to that 100, add that one foot to get the zero, which is the 101, which is the zero point for measuring the building height. So from that zero, they're proposing this home to go 18 and a half feet. The request is to go up to 20 feet in case they need wiggle room for the applicant. So that's what they're requesting, and that's why they're asking for the planned development, because they're trying to go taller than 15 feet. Now, you may ask yourself, well, why do they need this exception? Aren't there a lot of buildings that have RV garages that are over 15 feet, but they don't go through some sort of exception from the underlying development code? And yes, that's true. And here's an example of how that is done on a lot such as this that slopes downward from the street. Here again, we have the Trade Wind Street elevation on the right-hand side. That's, and then one foot above that is a zero, or the measuring the height of the building. So in this case, the 101, the zero comes across here, and we can go up 15 feet from there. Then to get a building that appears to be taller than 15 feet, in this case, 18 and a half, so in this example, you need to dig down. So you dig down below the 101 to get the extra height you need. And this is not uncommon in Havasu. There's something, though, that property owner needs to be aware of some concerns. If you do dig down, then you need to be aware of how the drainage is going to work. Consider the drainage, and typically it's done by draining the water obviously around the house to the low point, in the back, to a drainage easement, and/or to the street for drainage. Sometimes, most of the time when we see RV height garages, we don't see a pitched roof on them. Most of the time, they're flat roof, because the flat, the shorter you can make that overall, the less you have to dig down, and you'll have to deal as much with excavation or with as much with the runoff, the drainage issues. And in this case, they're asking for 18 and a half feet, and this is an example of how staff feels this could be developed. And buildings like this are not uncommon in Havasu to go digging down to get taller height overall. In fact, at this planning and zoning commission meeting, the planet, staff recommended denial of this request for this reason. I'll go to the next slide. Here are the two requests side by side. Here's what's allowed on the left-hand side without a code change, without a code amendment for this, without this request, excuse me. So again, the zero, the 101 is here. On the left-hand side, they dug down three and a half feet, get an 18 and a half foot tall building. On the right-hand side is what the applicant is requesting. He could, asking for up to 20 feet tall at the current 101. So they could, again, come in and fill that lot up, seven feet in the back, make it one foot above the street in the front, level it out, and go 20 feet tall if approved by council the way it requested. The planning and zoning commission, despite staff's recommendation of denial, they thought that this wasn't that much of impact on the neighborhood. They voted to approve this request by a vote of seven to zero. With that concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions? I believe the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. Do any members of council have any questions of Mr. Morris?
I do.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Luke, I don't know if you can answer this question for me or not, but all around the city, when people want to build these lots, they either go with a flat roof on their RV garage, or they dig down, or a combination thereof. Do you know why the planning and zoning made an exception for this one lot?
Well, I, thank you, Mr., excuse me, Commissioner Lane, the council member Lane. I, I believe they were looking at the area. They felt it wasn't as much of an impact. There, to the north of this, there appears to be a two-story building, but it's really the way it's done, it's not exceeding the 15 feet, because it's an upward sloping lot. It gets a little more convoluted determining the height when you're upward sloping lot, but they felt that it wasn't that much of an impact in the area. This one lot that was zone R3 to allow it to go up to 20 feet with a single-family home, I think they kind of felt, well, maybe there was a trade-off in what density could be allowed there with the number of multiple family units that could be developed there. And they maybe felt that one home up to 20 feet tall maybe was okay, but they felt it wasn't that great an impact on the neighborhood.
Thank you. And off the top of your head, do you know of any other location in town where we've made a, made a change like this?
For a single-family residence, no. Well, even for the, the most, the most recent, closest one would be the church up the hill on, on McCulloch Boulevard, but that's not really the same. It's not a residence. It's, but I don't, we don't see very many of these, no.
Okay. Thank you, sir. No further questions?
Councilmember Dolan? Yes?
I have a question. How many requests do we, do we get a year for, you know, like I said, some of them that, that don't want to dig down? I mean, how can, in a regular residential zone, can, do we get a lot of requests for that, and how many of those make it through planning and zoning?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Dolan. I mean, council member Dolan. The, the requests for these typically go through what's called a height adjustment for upward sloping lot. Those are lots that slope upward from the street, and that, again, it gets much more complicated. For lots that are downward sloping or level with the street, there's, it's basically, the 101 is what it is, one foot above the high point of the street. And so, in some of those cases, where it's, with a lot sloped down quite a ways, it, someone could dig down quite a bit and have it almost a two-story house with a, you know, walkout back, kind of a sunken backside, and a room above it. On upward sloping lots, it's a couple of ways to do it. You can average the setback corners. We can have a surveyor shoot the property and determine a 7,000-square-foot building pad, and that becomes a zero, and that could be, you know, 5, 10, 15 feet above the street. So because of the, the flexibility of the different types of ways, the 101 or zero can be determined, especially on upward sloping lot, we don't really see any, we've not seen any requests for height adjustments for this sort of thing. In fact, our, our PD says it really could be limited to not include single-family residential type lots for the PD ordinance, or within 100 feet of those. So this one is multiple-family zone, so it's, it meets the criteria for a candidate for a height adjustment.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Or we don't really see height adjustments other than for the grading, determine the maximum grade.
Okay. I just guess, you know, even zoning and issues like this is, is, I, I worry if we create a precedent and make sure that we're doing the same thing for everybody across the board, if somebody, I know when I built my house, we brought it down to 15 because it was detached and we had to, you know. I just want to make sure everybody's playing by the same game and we're not, you know, now setting a precedent that anybody that wants to build now, you know. I just want to make sure that we're, yeah. So I guess, as long as it's something we're doing for everybody.
Yes, well, thank you. This would not apply to a single-family residential lot with a single-family home being built on it. They could not request a PD height adjustment for that.
Okay, so this comes with the fact that they can do it, because it's an R3, they can make this request.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember McCoy?
With our wonderful protection, which is so great, but I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing. So bear with me. So is the house going to be on the upward slope of McCulloch? Is that why he doesn't want to dig down because of the flooding he'll get with the water coming down? Is that the reason for that, or?
Well, again, council member, my understanding is that's one of his concerns. I'm sure he can address that if he's in the, at the meeting today.
Yeah, with the applicant. Yeah, Alan, would you like to come, come forward to the podium, and we can ask some of these more specific questions to you?
Thank you.
My name is Alan Atwell. Do you want to start out with questions, or you want to start out with what I have to say? I mean, I don't really answer anything other than...
Yeah, well, we start out with what you have to say, and then we'll...
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council and city staff, first of all, thank you for your time, and I'll keep this brief. Throughout this process, I worked closely with Luke from the city staff, and I want to thank him for his time and his insights. During the onsite with the citizens' review that's required as part of the planned development process, there were zero complaints from any of the neighbors around. Their only concern or question was, why do you want to live on McCulloch? For the same reason you did, we want to live close to downtown where all the events are. All my planned development fees have been paid. The development plan was approved by city staff. The planning and zoning commission approved the planned development with an overwhelming seven to zero vote with zero says complaints or concerns. And the reason why is they also realized that digging down three feet is a bad idea. You can try to put in flood and drainage and all that, but all it takes is one time and your house is flooded. It's better to be above ground than below ground. Okay? The planned development process is allowed as part of the general plan. I looked it up. I don't, don't have my book with me, but I could coach you where it's at. It's allowed on R3. It's not allowed on R1 or R2. Right now, I live in an elevated lot, so I know what that means when you average the four corners and get your height adjustment. Well, when you're on a downhill sloping lot, that's not allowed. So you have to go through the plan development process to make that happen. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, another point is during your citizens' meeting, the, the biggest concern was the higher density. So with a PD, you're, you're going to be building a single-family home, so that neighbor has that assurance that it's going to be a home and not more high-density uses that are allowed in R3.
Right. I mean, I had one, I was going to try to go for an R4, because that gives me a 30-foot, but they were concerned on the block below, I was going to try to do both, so it wasn't just an island. just an island. And they were concerned that, oh, two-story, they're going to block my view of the lake. So that's where I dropped it down to an R3 plan development, tried to keep the citizens happy and still get what I need.
Yeah, so it looks like you mitigated all, all the neighbor concerns with doing that.
Yes. So again, seven to zero on the planning and zoning commission in favor.
Yes. Any other questions of the applicant, of any members of the council? All right. Thank you, Strathwell. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, and we also do not have any written comment. I forgot to mention it the last one, but we don't have any written comment. We are accepting that via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. We have not received any of that. I will now close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
I move to adopt ordinance number 20-1242, approving a planned development rezone of 2430 Trade Wind Drive, tract 2293, block 5, lot 11, from R3 to R3/PD for a height exception from the maximum building height of fifteen feet to allow a single-family resident with a height of up to twenty feet. Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? All right, we are ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right, item 8.3 is approve the professional services agreement with Willdan Financial Services for the 2020 utility cost of service rate study. Yeah, we, there might be a...
Oh, there we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. The last time the city completed a utility rate study was in 2008. And with the expiration of the IDD and uncertainty with the CIP budget for wastewater and water, it is important to move forward with this study. Kevin Burnett is here tonight from Willdan Financial Services to provide a brief presentation and talk a little bit more about what to expect during this process and the involvement of the city council as pertains to this. Kevin?
Great. Thanks, Anthony. As Anthony said, I'm Kevin Burnett with Willdan Financial Services. So I'm going to give you a brief presentation about the team that we put together for this project and then the steps that we're proposing to go through. We're thrilled that staff decided to recommend us to you for this study. So with that, we'll move into some introductions and backgrounds. So in terms of Willdan as a whole, we've got significant local, regional, national experience related to Havasu. Anthony mentioned the last study was down in 2008. That was in my former life. I did the study back in 2008, so I have been here before. We're also working in Bullhead and Kingman, Arizona, right now. So we're, we're working with some of your neighbors as well as other cities throughout Arizona, California, Texas, Colorado, throughout the country. So we've got wide-ranging experience, different types of rate structures that we've used and recommended. We don't use a cookie cutter approach to the way we're doing things. This just died on me. So this is my background up here. I've been doing this for, for almost 20 years now, done over 100 of these types of studies. I'll be the main contact point for the city if you choose to approve our contract. So I will be the day-to-day project manager, along with my colleague who is with her grandson this week, so she's not available to be here tonight. I'll be leading the analytical and the model development throughout this study, working on the cost of service. And I'll be the one that you will see in front of council yourselves at the different meetings and stakeholder meetings and all staff meetings. So my co-project manager, as I mentioned, is not here because she's with her grandson. She's Pat Walker. She's formerly the CFO of Chandler, Arizona. So as she likes to say, she's been on both sides of the table. She's been in the consulting world as well as on the public sector side. She's been doing this for over 40 years. She's been working exclusively with Willdan for the past seven years. She has her own firm and she, she teams exclusively with us. And she's also going to participate in city council meetings as well as any stakeholder meetings that we might have. We've got Michael Cronin, who's an analyst for us. So he's going to be doing a lot of the legwork, the data manipulation, the entry into the models and whatnot that Pat and I direct him to do. So he'll be supervised by the two of us. And then we've got a fourth member of the team, Jeff McGarvey. He's been doing this for about 25 years. He'll be involved in the project, but he won't be doing the day-to-day. So he's going to have an outsider's perspective, if you will. He'll have an idea of what we're doing, but he'll be able to give that, that extra set of eyes and stir the pot, as he likes to say. And did you consider this? And what did you think about that? Or why are you doing it this way? Since he's not going to be directly involved in the day-to-day, he brings a little bit of a different perspective that we might have overlooked. Some of the things that we looked at prior to the interview and as we were preparing for this, some statistics that we put together that, that jumped out at us. The big one on the water being a 76.2 million-dollar capital plan over the next several years. So that's a pretty big undertaking for the city. On its own, it's a pretty big undertaking. And then when you, wrapping the fact that the IDD tax is going away in a little over a year or so, those are going to be some challenges that we'll need to work very closely with staff on to, to work through that. And then on the wastewater utility, still a big capital budget, but not quite the size of the water one. So the first few bullet points here, these are things that are fairly common to all studies that we do, developing the financial model, the comprehensive analysis, making sure that you're meeting your operating costs, you've got sufficient reserves, you're funding your capital. The replacement of the IDD revenue stream is going to be unique to you all. That's not something that we come across very often. The providing the assessment of the existing financial condition, that's something that, that's common in each of these studies. And then we're going to get into some more specifics for Havasu itself, meeting cost of service. So in other words, how much does it cost for us to serve the residential class versus the commercial class? And are they paying their proportionate share? Making sure we've got the right revenue requirements. Some of the objectives that staff identified as wanting to look at were drought management objectives, seasonal demand, conservation, and financial stability, which are two things that I'll touch on a little bit more in a minute here. So in terms of the scope of work itself, so the first, the first thing we're going to be doing is sitting down with staff and having a, a meeting to go through and make sure we're all on the same page. We've got the right objectives. We're not heading down one road where staff thinks we should be heading down another one. So we want to make sure that we're all on the same page right from the get-go. So that's going to be a pretty critical meeting for us to have right at the beginning. We've got a sample dashboard here. We understand that the city has a model that they use. We're, we're pretty proud of ours. So our inclination would be to use our model and then turn it over to the city at the end for, for the city to update in the future. But if you're comfortable with your model and that's the one you want to go with, we're happy to stick with what you've got. We're flexible on that front. So the next, we're getting into the cost of service analysis. So this is what I touched on before, where we're going to look at each of your different customer classes. How much does it cost to serve each class? Are they paying their proportionate share? Do we have the right classes identified? Do we need to consolidate some? Do we need to expand some? What do we need to do with that? So we're going to look at the data and see what that tells us. Then we're going to have another meeting on the rate design analysis. So this is going to be pretty important for us with staff. So we'll discuss the pros and cons of different rate structures. The fourth bullet there, the identify the importance of competing objectives. So that gets into that revenue stability versus conservation piece that we saw a couple slides back. So for example, if you're going for a revenue stability, you would charge a flat rate. Everybody seems, pays the same rate every month regardless of how much water they use. Finance department's happy because they know how much revenue they're getting every month. It does nothing for conservation. If you pay the same amount, if you use 100 CCF or 1,000 CCF, you have no incentive to conserve whatsoever. So we need to do that balancing act and work with staff to figure out what's the appropriate mix and what do we want our rates to look like going forward. We'll have a preliminary draft report and a final report. So once we get the preliminary draft report written, we'll circulate it with staff, make sure we've covered everything. It's something that they understand. We want to make sure that we've got a, a report that everybody can understand. If it's something written too technical, the way we think of things, and it doesn't read well with staff, that's not going to do anybody any good. So we want to make sure we have that, that process as well. And then we've got a lot of meetings involved in this. We, we very much view this as a partnership, so we don't like to meet with you at the front end, go back to our offices, and then hand you the final product at the end. We want to make sure that you're involved every step of the way so that we're all on the same page and we all understand where we're headed with this. So we've got several onsite meetings, and then we'll have conference calls and, and web meetings throughout the process as well. So in summarizing here, we think we have the experience, the qualifications, and the depth of bench to take care of this. Our experience tells us which direction to go to, what questions to ask, but I'm not going to stand here and say we have all the answers right now. We can't go to the web. We can't go to a library and pull a book off the shelf and say, for Lake Havasu City, this is the answer. We don't know what that is yet, and we won't know until we get into the data and start meeting with everybody and talking to everyone. So like I said, this is very much going to be a collaborative team effort. The council and stakeholders' involvement is going to be critical to this process as well. If we go down a road that stakeholders, the public, the council isn't happy with, that's going to be a failure in our opinion. So we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page throughout the entire process. It doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's going to agree 100% with everything that we come up with, but we want to at least try and achieve some consensus of we're moving in the right direction and we've got something that we can live with. And then the ultimate timeline is to have this wrapped up in January of 2021. So fairly aggressive timeline, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us. And that's all we have for our formal presentation.
Great. So you said the goal is to have it done by January 2021. How do we make that happen? How do, how are we going to be assured that it happens by then?
So we've provided Anthony with a, with a timeline that we've got laid out right now so that we've got the different milestones. We've got different meeting dates identified. So it's going to be critical for us to get the information from the staff and make sure that we understand everything. So if there's something that we don't understand, we can't sit on it for two weeks and then get back to staff. We need to have that back and forth collaborative team effort all the way throughout the process so that you're not waiting on us, we're not waiting on you. Or if we are waiting on something from you, there's other tasks that we can be doing in the meantime to make sure that we, we stick with that timeline.
And then what does stakeholder engagement look like? So from a council perspective, will we have options through, the benchmark options midway through, or we'll get the report at the end of January and, and that's that?
So we left that a little bit open-ended. As we talked about it through the interview process, we've done this many different ways with many different clients. Some councils that we work with don't want to see things. They don't want to see how the sausage is made, if you will. They just want to see the end product. We've got other ones that want to be involved throughout the process. We've done different meetings where we'll have stakeholder groups throughout the process where we'll say, you know, here are our preliminary thoughts, and we'll have three or four different rate structures. Give us your opinion of these. We'll take that feedback, refine it, come back and meet with them again based on what we heard last time. This is where we're headed with this. We've done some of that. We've done other ones where we've worked with staff to develop the rate structure, but then we've had like open houses at the, towards the end of the project where we invite the public to come in and we give a brief presentation of what the rate structure options we're looking at. We've got bill calculators that we've developed so that we can have a computer set up and, and you can punch in, well, if I use this much water, or this is what my typical water use is, this is what my bill is today, this is what it is, under each of these different alternatives so that we get some better idea of what's going on before we present to you all, assuming you're not involved throughout the earlier process at your, at your choice.
Okay. How have you been dealing with some of these studies you've been doing with COVID? How have you been engaging communities?
So a lot of them have been put on hold for us. A lot of it, a lot more of it's been done through the web meetings and that kind of thing. So Kingman that we're working with, as opposed to us doing the stakeholder meetings in person, they've been taking the, the survey approach. So it's, it extended the timeline a little bit. They kind of put the options together and put a survey together and sent that out to the community. But we've got other, other clients that are still going full bore with the, with the stakeholder groups where, you know, we're masked up or whatever, the, the social distancing, that kind of thing, so that we're still able to present and communicate with the public and, and solicit feedback. So like I said, whatever you feel comfortable with, we're flexible and we've got the resources that we can, we can manage what your expectations are for it.
Yeah, so sorry for all the questioning, but you're coming right behind a consultant that didn't do such a good job. And so we're not on this particular item, but on, on items. And so, sorry, you're going to be the guy, but we've got to make sure. This is an important study for us to make some really critical decisions. And so we need to rely on you to be timely and engage our community and engage our council and work with our staff to have a really solid end product for us to make these critical decisions. So that's the, that's the line of my questioning. So sorry, sorry, you have to be that person, but you're coming right behind that company. Any other questions of council?
I have a question for Anthony or for Jess. Which, is it the public works that's overseeing this? Is it finance? Is it the city manager's office?
Good evening, Councilmember Dolan. So the, the, the project manager is Anthony Kozlowski. So what, but it's going to involve multiple departments. So, you know, the conversations and the presentations, we talk about identifying what the CIP looks like and what the, what the costs are for infrastructure, capital and projects, maintenance, operations over the course of timeframe. And then we need to understand what that, those costs are to the systems moving forward. And then there'll be conversations that'll involve Jill Olsen's and her department and her team and her department and admin services with regards to maybe a rate structure, rate designs, those types of things, too. So this will involve a couple of different departments. And because of that, Anthony Kozlowski will take the lead to, to engage conversations amongst everybody that needs to be engaged and then lead the effort in terms of the public conversations and, and council input as well.
Great. All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
Hello, everybody. Cameron Moses. This would be the part in the interview where I say, okay, I'm going to call on some references and, and see how you're doing. Have, have we followed up with any of the cities that have used these, this consultant before? You know, what have they had to say about them? Thank you.
Yeah, great question.
Sure, I can, I can speak to that. Willdan Financial Services has amazing experience and background in this field. I myself have worked with them in Bullhead City. I worked with Kevin. He did a great job for the city as well, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We also did not receive any written comments via cityclerk@lhcaz.gov.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane? Please.
I move to approve the professional services agreement with Willdan Financial Services for the 2020 utility cost of service rate study.
Second?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion?
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 8.4 is approve amendment number two to the professional services agreement for on-call engineering consulting services for the Lake Havasu City Airport with CNS Engineers, Inc. Mr. Herb?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What we have before you tonight is an amendment to extend an on-call design agreement with CNS Engineers for one additional year. The details are outlined in your, your council agenda packet tonight. Specifically, the original on-call agreement allows CNS engineers to provide design and construction management services to assist the city with our city airport's CIP projects. The original agreement was approved back in 2016. It was good for three years, and it allows for two additional one-year extensions. This will be the second and final extension associated with this, with this contract. This fiscal year, the city has four CIP projects going on at the airport and this will allow us to move forward with those projects. So city staff recommends that city council approves the amendment that's before you tonight and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so CNS is a specialty firm that deals specifically in aviation. So it, it provides a good background services for, for our, to augment the services that we already have in-house, so. Do any council members have any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we also did not receive any written comments at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. Bring it back to council.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Councilmember Koch, yes.
I move to approve amendment number two to the professional services agreement for on-call airport engineering consulting services with CNS Engineers, Inc.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. So it'll just be a second, I think, and then we'll, yeah. So we have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Dolan to approve the engineering consulting services agreement with CNS Engineering. All right, I believe we've all voted now.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item nine of our agenda is current events. Do any council members have any council committee reports? Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, we heard from Debbie Pennington earlier from River Cities United Way and about the LHC Resource Alliance. I just wanted to go into a little further detail since at our last city council meeting, the council approved up to $250,000 of CARES Act dollars to go to assist local businesses in keeping their doors open through this pandemic. And we had our first meeting today. We, we've been receiving applications since the, that meeting. And I just wanted to, to let you all know that we did approve the first two companies and that tomorrow we'll be writing checks in the amount of $12,659. We have 12 companies that have made inquiries. We're just waiting on a lot of financial documents. They all have to provide reasons why they need CARES Act dollars. And then we're, we're vetting each and every one of those to ensure that it is a COVID-related issue and that we're going to be able to help the companies survive as we go forward. So there were a couple of companies that applied that still don't have their, their information to us. And so we, we expect next week that these dollar numbers will go up and, and I'll continue to give the, the council reports on, on how those dollars are being spent and how much of the, the community that we're helping with these dollars. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. Any other council committee reports? All right, moving on, but before I do, so I don't forget, having these hybrid meetings that we have, a big thank you to Jerry Bracchini in the back control room for, for making all of this happen with Zoom in and Zoom out and Steve for, for making sure everybody can have access to the open process of city government. Moving on to item 10 is our future meetings. Our next meeting will be this Thursday, September 10th, 2020, at 6:00 PM for a special meeting. We then will have a meeting on Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, at 6:00 PM. And again, a regular meeting on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Item 11, now future discussion items. Do any members of the council have any future discussion items? Seeing that, we'll move to item 12. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember McCoy. Be kind, take care. We are adjourned.